Okay, in tonight's meeting, we welcomed two new officers. We gave recognition and commendations to two other officers and our K-9 officer for saving the life of a young resident. And I just think we are very fortunate to have a team that we have here working diligently to keep our public safe and just happy in the city that we're having to live in here, all together. And then we went on in the meeting to also speak on the marijuana issue. And we did ultimately pass a cultivation ordinance for the City of Clear Lake that will be enforceable this season.
Moving on to adoption of the agenda. Oh boy, we're getting down to the last few, gentlemen. Is there any modifications to tonight's agenda?
No, Madam Mayor, there are not.
Thank you.
Make him wish to accept.
Still call voting?
Councilmember Overton?
Yes.
Councilmember Perdop?
Aye.
Councilmember Savatia?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Fortino Dixon?
Aye.
Mayor Lustelmo?
Aye.
Moving on to presentations, tonight's presentation is by Lieutenant Tim Selly. And he will do some commendations and introductions. So I will turn this over to him.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, distinguished members of the council, I just first want to say thank you for allowing me to do this presentation for you tonight. I'd like to introduce two brand-new police officers that we have. First, I'd like to introduce Officer Leonardo Flores. He comes to us from Fresno area. He is a graduate of the Golden West High School in Visalia, California. He obtained a bachelor's degree in criminology from the Fresno State and graduated from the Fresno City Police Academy. He is interested in furthering his career, his education, by obtaining a master's degree in counseling. He is also interested in advancing his career and is into all types of sports and enjoys fishing. That's Officer Leonardo Flores. Nice to meet you. Next, I'd like to introduce Officer Matt Hewitt. He was born and raised in the city of Ronan Park. He graduated from Rancho de Tobi High School. He earned an associate's degree in criminal justice from Santa Rosa Junior College. He would like to advance his career and aspire to be a patrol sergeant. He is involved in competitive powerlifting, he enjoys driving cars, and spending time with his family and friends. And this is Officer Matt Hewitt. He started Monday. Officer Flores started about three weeks ago.
Thank you, welcome. Thank you for being here. Thanks for joining our team.
Next, I have the honor and privilege to talk about three officers who I believe all performed very well and did an outstanding job. The first one I'd like to talk about is Detective Ryan Peterson. On May 20th this year, Detective Peterson was contacted by a woman by the name of Teresa Chase. Teresa Chase was in the Lake County Jail. She had been released several months early for good time behavior. Detective Peterson had the opportunity to meet her while she was in county jail briefly, very briefly. And then when Ms. Chase was released from the county jail, she was recovering from being a drug addict. And while she was in jail, she did a few things like hid and evolved the community garden program and things like that. She wanted to change her life. She was released from county jail early and she had plans when she was released to get into a program. However, because of the several months early release, they didn't have a space available for her. So she did the only thing she knew. And she met a person in jail who she roomed with. And during that time, very briefly, she realized that that was not a good opportunity for her and was not conducive to her sobriety. So she needed to leave. She didn't have any friends here and didn't know what to do. She remembered Detective Peterson. She contacted him and told him of her circumstances. Detective Peterson very diligently tried to help her, tried to get her into a program, and tried several times through several different agencies and was unable to do so at that time. But he stayed diligent nevertheless and finally found a program that would accept her and made arrangements for that to happen, however she had to get a ride there the next day. Detective Peterson very confidently said, "We will get her there." And then he immediately started contacting resources locally and was able to get help from a pastor, from a local church, who helped her with making arrangements for that ride. Also Detective Peterson made arrangements for her to stay the night somewhere at a location. And I later learned that Detective Peterson also gave a monetary donation to help further since giving her to this location, which I thought was just above and beyond. I thought it was outstanding, to help someone that he barely knew and she came to him. And I think it's just awesome that that made those folks know that they can count on monetary support. So I'd like to read his certificate of commendation. Detective Peterson, step forward. This says, "In recognition of your actions while helping a citizen in need who came to you for help when she had nowhere else to go. Your professionalism, tenacity, and most importantly, your compassion exemplified what all law enforcement officers should strive for. Due to your willingness to help a person who was struggling with addiction, with whom you only knew through a brief conversation while she was in custody led to a positive outcome for her, your actions set the positive light upon the whole of yourself and clearly the experiment by all law enforcement as well." The next circumstance, these, actually, I would say two officers, but there's two and a half officers involved in this. With all the different things, all of the negative publicity around this and surrounding law enforcement is, it's really nice to have Detective Peterson go out of his way to help a person. And I'm really proud of that fact. And the two and a half officers that I'm going to commend next are Officer Franklin, Officer Mike Ray, and Police K-9 Harley. Basically, if I can just read this, this says, "In recognition of your actions," this is for Officer Franklin, "in recognition of your actions and diligent efforts that led to location of a missing person, which subsequently saved her life. The missing person would have surely perished had it not been for your efforts and outstanding teamwork with your partner officers. On April 8th, 2015, you were assigned to investigate a missing person's case. This particular missing person happened to be an 11-year-old mentally challenged girl who left her residence on 32nd Avenue more than four hours prior to you being notified at 8:44 PM. Once receiving the information, you immediately began follow-up into locating the missing person. Through investigation and leads, you developed information that led to a plausible area where the girl was last seen. You did this all the while sorting through other information that was determined not to be relevant to the case. Your investigation eventually led you to a residence on Second Street, which is on the other side of town. Based on your interview with the resident, who admitted to last seeing the girl at approximately 7:30 PM, you decided that this location was the area that needed to be concentrated on. You coordinated with Officer Ray, who responded to assist with your search effort. This led to the discovery of a single shoe print, which in your mind further confirmed that the missing girl was last seen in this area. You and Officer Ray, along with his K-9 partner Harley, began to check an adjacent wooded area. The police K-9 led to a path and alerted to an overturned abandoned boat. You checked this boat and discovered the girl lying under the boat nearly 11:00 PM. She was unresponsive and apparently suffering from hypothermia. After checking her vital signs and realizing the severity of the situation, you scooped up the girl, carried her out of the wooded area to the location where you rendered first aid and waited the arrival of medical personnel. She was eventually treated at the hospital, where she recovered and returned to her family. Outstanding job, officer." This is his certificate of commendation and it just reflects exactly what was written. And last but certainly not least, have Officer Ray and K-9 partner Harley. "In recognition of your actions that led to the location of a missing person, which subsequently saved her life. The missing person would have surely perished had it not been for your effort. Outstanding teamwork and quick thinking with your partner officers. On April 8th, 2015, you were on duty when a fellow officer was involved in a missing person case, an 11-year-old mentally challenged girl. Information was developed that led to a plausible location where the girl was last seen. You requested the location to assist. Coupled with your K-9 partner Harley, you, Harley and Officer Franklin located a single shoe print, which you believe was further evidence that you were on the right track in looking for the missing girl. Without hesitation, thinking outside the box, you and your K-9 partner started a K-9 track from the shoe print. Harley, being an apprehension K-9, would not generally be used in a search and rescue operation. But nevertheless, you thought it to be a circumstance that would be beneficial. This was a decision that would pay off with lifesaving results. Shortly after starting the track, Harley led you through a wooded area into an abandoned overturned boat. Recognizing your K-9 partner's alert behavior, you directed Officer Franklin a search under the boat where the girl was subsequently located. She was suffering from parathythermia and was unresponsive. First aid was provided and she was transported to the hospital, where she received treatment and was later returned to her family. Had it not been for your outstanding teamwork with both Officer Franklin and your K-9 partner, this situation would have surely ended in jeopardy. I commend you and your K-9 team for a job well done." Thank you, Harley. That concludes my presentation. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And thank you, officers. Welcome aboard and thank you for the good job that you guys have done for us. Moving on to public comment. In public comment, you're allowed to have three minutes this evening to speak on anything that is not on tonight's agenda. So as long as it's not on tonight's agenda, you may come up and speak for three minutes. It will be timed by our city clerks. I do have a couple forms already filled out. The first person is Linda Richardson. And she'd like to speak on code enforcement.
Just tell us your name and usually they will say citizen of Clear Lake or something like that. Linda Richardson, I'm in Clear Lake. And I have a complaint. I guess I could go ahead and say that now. Okay, my family has owned a property for many years and has never had a problem. All of a sudden, there's squatters next door on an empty lot that is owned by the city. And they moved in all their junk next door and it looks like crap. My renter got robbed and moved out. We've been fixing the rental lot and installing the power tools in the garage and, let's see, and we've gotten robbed since then. And the neighbor on the other side of the property, he's also gotten robbed. Gee, what a coincidence. Very interesting. So it's what they call an attractive nuisance, and I don't think it's attractive at all. It looks like crap. And the property belongs to the city. They want people, if they want people to, I don't know why they would want people on their property for free. I can't get someone to rent at my property as long as the squatters are there. They are up in the middle of the night, cooking, fighting, et cetera. They need to go. And their trailer that they have is halfway, it's being registered, so something needs to be done. Thank you.
Thank you. The address that you wrote, Mrs. Richardson, on your public comment form, is that the address you're referring to?
Yes.
Along with this paper?
And I also filed a placement form, which I gave to the lady over here.
Our next public comment is Kelly Reed. Would you like to speak on code enforcement?
Hello, my name is Kelly Reed. I am a resident of Clear Lake and I am the person on the other side of that empty lot that is being trashed by the squatters. The pictures you have are pictures that were recently taken from pictures two weeks ago. These pictures were taken on Sunday of the development of the lot, which is more garbage. And the trailer has not been touched, it has not been moved. I have heard from other sources that it was scheduled to be hauled off three different times and it's still there. It hasn't moved one inch. And I've had power tools missing from my yard, from my back porch, that is in the middle of a quarter acre lot, since those people moved over next door, the squatters. So I love Clear Lake, it's beautiful out there. But it's not beautiful looking at that lot. So what can we do as citizens? What could we do? If I owned that lot, the city would be after me to clean up that lot. And I've been dealing with this for over eight months. And the city wouldn't allow me eight months to clean it up if it was my mess, because I owned the lot. So what can we as citizens do to protect ourselves and defend ourselves and clean up the lot? What is our legal standpoint? What can we do to resolve this situation?
In public comment, we are not allowed to go back.
I know, I understand.
I can refer you to where it's at. Okay, who can answer your questions?
You are, Joan? Yes. I would like to have a meeting with you. I have called you two or three times. If you would call me, I'd greatly appreciate it, so that we could have a conversation. Okay, I would appreciate it. So that's all I have to say. I mean, I have more important things to do with my time than to complain about people. I don't complain about anybody. But I'm not going to let my child, which is sitting right over here, be afraid to walk across the street because of this drug-infested bickering going on. Okay? In the middle of the night, they woke me up out of a dead sleep, acting like they're trying to kill each other, and I heard breaking glass. Well, yes, I called. And the officer came out and told them, "Are you fighting?" "Oh, no, no, no." Well, they stopped their fighting. So what else can we do? I would appreciate it if something could get done relatively soon. It would be nice to see some kind of activity in a positive manner in cleaning up this lot. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Bill Shields.
I have a concern about what I'm hearing. Now, it's my understanding that the city has something like 6 million in B bonds, 2 billion in A bonds. Now, how is this money going to be spent? Are the citizens going to be involved in this? Are you just going to do what you want to do? Now, if the city does not get the citizens involved with workshops and stuff, how to spend this money, you're going to see me out there demonstrating. Because the city, over the last years, has wasted more money than I can even count. Thank you.
Thank you. Estelle Field?
In these, I might need a couple extra minutes.
Three minutes timed by our city clerk.
Now, at the last meeting, Bruno challenged just about everything I said, stating that I was incorrect. Well, Bruno, this is the ordinance in regards to fences. You cannot, with a 25-foot setback, put up an 8-foot fence unless you go before the planning commission and pay the fees. And then you could probably build a 100-foot fence if it was approved. Also, you were slightly incorrect, and this is the newspaper that you might try reading sometimes, that actually states what the minimum and the maximum fines were charged at the previous meeting. And those fines were doubled. And the minimum fine, even though if you had read your packet, the minimum fine, no, you stated the maximum fine was 2,500. That was like incorrect. Also, back in February, over at the senior center, I made the statement that those slides that had been shown at a previous meeting were treetops. You once again stated that they weren't. But prior to that, we had a conversation, Bruno. You told me in our conversation that you had seen marijuana plants in Humboldt County and in Clear Lake, and that you had known that those were not marijuana plants in those slides. You also told me that you spoke to the city and you told them that they should apologize to the people for giving them a bogus story. Also, you told me who did those flights. Well, you know something, Bruno? You didn't have to tell me because I already knew about that person. So get your facts straight, guy.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak at public comment this evening? Okay, seeing none, I will close public comment. Moving on to the consent agenda. Is there anyone from the council that would like to pull an item? Seeing none, is there anyone from the public that would like to pull an item from the consent agenda? Okay, seeing none. Does Mayor get out of motion?
Make a motion to accept the consent agenda as submitted.
I'll second it. And a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Overton?
Aye.
Councilmember Savatia?
Aye.
Councilmember Perdop?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Fortino Dixon?
Aye.
Mayor Lustelmo?
Aye.
Moving on to business, item number eight. Consideration of second reading of ordinance number 175-2015, amending ordinance number 2013-161A, and ordinance of the City Council of the City of Clear Lake, amending Chapter X of the Clear Lake Municipal Code, adding section 10 through 7 prohibiting commercial medical marijuana cultivation and cultivation on vacant properties and limiting cultivation amounts in the city of Clear Lake. And I will turn this over to our city manager.
Thank you, I have just a few comments. This item is on the agenda as a result of council's consideration and first reading of the proposed ordinance at the May 28th council meeting. There were some direction provided to staff at that meeting to make some modifications for the ordinance before you this evening, which is here for second reading. The staff report gives the highlights of what those were. We're going to turn it over to the city attorney at this point to go through those in detail and then answer your questions and then certainly for public comment and then ultimately potentially your adoption of the ordinance.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. So we are here for a second reading based on the direction that staff got from the council from two weeks ago. So we did amend the ordinance pursuant to those recommendations, the other direction. The major change is that originally the ordinance came with a six plant per parcel. That has been modified for show consideration to the original ordinance, which had relied about terms sliding scale based on the size of the lots. So that language from that ordinance, which was passed back in 2013, was supplanted into this current ordinance as before you. There were a couple of other, I guess more minor changes that we made. We eliminated, there was some language about a grandfather clause for growth that was close to a childcare center that was deleted. There was some other language about removing the word regulator, or from prohibitive to regulatory to reflect it's no longer, it's not a ban, it's regulation of cultivation. We also further defined the hazardous condition to talk about the summary abatement, so that was more clear. There was also a shortened reduced timeframe on the amount of days for abating the nuisance from 15 to 10 days. I do want to point out for the council, though, that before you is a slightly modified version from the one that was previously put on the agenda that was posted. And that is because going back, I talked to staff and my thinking of staff's comment about the height restriction of the marijuana plant. That was something we discussed actually two meetings ago, but last meeting, the direction from the council was to put in the previous ordinance, the 2013 ordinance. And in looking at that one, there actually is not a per se height restriction of this feat. Instead, if you look at page six, in the middle, there's a paragraph there. And it speaks to, the height limit can be, just so it's screened in from public view, visible from public, so if somebody has plants growing above their fence line, that would be contrary and prohibited by the ordinance. The fences generally are six feet, depends on where you are and what variance you may get. I'm not going to get into what that specific fence might be. But in so doing, I realize that wasn't the intended, the council's direction about a height limit, so I have deleted a paragraph in there about, you know, a six-foot height limit. Because I don't think, even if that's what the council wants to do, and certainly you can change it now, but what that means is we'd have to come back for another second reading in two weeks to pass that. So this ordinance as drafted should reflect the direction from two weeks ago. And in fact, our public comment, the council's willing to pass this tonight and then we go into effect in 30 days from now. If there's any questions, I'm happy to take them at this time.
Thank you. Anyone have anything to put up? I will open this item up to public comment. Anyone like to speak on this item? Seeing none, I will close public comment. Okay, is there someone that would like to speak? So please stand up and come forward.
I'd like to have some clarity on your changes in regards to your changes this time various from two weeks ago.
Our changes, I'll refer that to our city attorney, you just spoke about them.
Yeah, I think I highlighted.
Very brief. And not real explicit.
The council liked me to re-explain what we did. I mean, really, what, there were very specific changes to some sections, I'm happy to go through, but the fundamental change is that the six plant ordinance that the council, we previously discussed, was changed to go back to the previous 2013 ordinance, which has a varying number of plants per parcel. The rest of the ordinance generally maintains the same. We have, the back end of the sections allows for the eradication, for the enforcement and the penalties associated with anybody who's violating this ordinance. So if there are specific questions about any changes, we went through, if you recall, two weeks ago, there were, I'd say five or six word choices, the definition of hazardous condition, a change in our prohibit to regulate. We further added language under public nuisance to say that it doesn't mean just no cultivation of marijuana, marijuana cultivation in violation of the ordinance. And, did I do that? Did I say? And, is it? We also changed the word undersale materials to include any materials used for cultivation to make that more clear. And that, those are all the changes that we made.
So the, the changes were posted along with the agenda, just like at we got, it was able to be seen?
That's correct.
Very good.
Give me a definition of your nuisance.
Well, the council liked...
It's a very wide and broad thing. I could say you're a nuisance.
Fine, would you? Do you have a copy of this? How the definition is a blank line. I thought it was three minutes.
Oh, no, we're not on that anymore for...
Excuse me, direct it to us, please, stop.
Oh, okay, we're not on the three-minute scale no more.
So let's keep it on our questions. Would you, I was offering a copy to you.
I have my copy. Here's the definitions here.
Okay.
I think we have someone else waiting. Run, Dave, run, run, run.
I, I just want clarification. Is what we're doing tonight going to go into effect in 30 days? You said something about we'd have to go back two weeks if you made a change, but that change isn't being made.
That's correct. If the council wanted to make additional changes tonight, they certainly could, but it would require us to come back in two. At this point, the council's happy with this ordinance. They can pass it tonight and it becomes effective in 30 days.
Take it for what it is and let's get it in effect in 30 days. Get on with it, unfortunately. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, and I think to bring our agreement to the council's direction two weeks ago, this is an ordinance that is really for this growth season, for this period of time. We had talked to Ms. Philippi about this and we're looking to next week to bring in the ad hoc committee to talk about, to appoint the ad hoc committee to formally discuss with the public and with other members of the council about what they want to do going forward. So certainly amending, revising, drafting a new ordinance is something that would be discussed by this ad hoc committee going forward. This is, this is the ordinance for us today.
Thank you. Seeing no one else, I am closing public comment. I'm the active council.
Oh, we're going to have the event. If there's any further comments, please come forward.
Please come forward and be ready to speak.
I'll be very quick. I'm concerned about the 10-day thing for putting a post on somebody's house because I'm concerned that people who have renters, if you can't contact the property owner, then 10 days go by, the house can go up into lean and I'm afraid it might be a property grab. So I just want to make sure that somehow or another that you guys consider carefully that you don't have to contact the property owner before taking action on these people. I think that's really something to consider because a lot of people have rental property here and they're not living in the area. And please, please consider that for the people that have properties with rentals. Thank you.
Right, thank you.
As I understand it, it's that there's a dual. One is mailed to the red, to the property owner on file and another is posted at the property address. And you suck their mail, registered mail, up to date.
You know, the whole state of California is on water shortage. Now, I have been noticing people taking these gigantic tanks and the bike of their pickup, going down to the lake and filling them up. Now, what are they doing with that water? I mean, does Ziddy keeping high...
We have to talk about the cultivation ordinance right now.
Well, do they have the right to get water out of the lake?
If it's permitted through Yule County water, they can.
They can.
If it's permitted through Yule County water, that's my understanding.
Correct.
So they can go down, get water to grow their marijuana.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to order this, what's on the agenda.
We need to stick to the agenda this evening. We have one item. Seeing no one else, I am closing public comment, bringing it back to the council. Anyone like to discuss this item on the council? So I close public comment. We're in the middle of our meeting.
Good for you. I don't know that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So Vice Mayor Fortino Dixon?
Um, thank you. Um, I think this is a terrific staff gap. I think this provides the necessary teeth in order to enforce this ordinance this growing season. What we choose to do in the future, when the ad hoc committee comes back as a recommendation with, will be different than this, but I think this serves our purpose for right now and right now is when we need to attend to the issues at hand. Well, I'm a... I'm very happy with the document as it stands. Anyone else?
May I get a motion?
And I move to approve ordinance numbers 175, 2-2015, amending ordinance number 2013-161A, and ordinance of the City Council of the City of Clearlake, amending chapter 10 of the Clearlake Municipal Code and adding section 10-7 prohibiting commercial medical marijuana cultivation and cultivation on vacant properties and limiting cultivation amounts in the City of Clearlake. And read by title only.
Second.
A roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Overton?
Aye.
Councilmembers Sabatier?
Aye.
Councilmember Pernock?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Fortino Dixon?
Aye.
Mayor Lustelmo?
Aye.
Now I'll turn this over to our city manager. Roll call for last reports.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So the last couple of weeks have been fairly busy in terms of working on the budget. We had our budget workshop last Thursday evening on the board. I thought it went very well. It was focused on goals and objectives and policies, which will be back before you at the end of the month when you adopt the budget. We do have a workshop scheduled on the budget document itself, which you did receive a copy of this evening, next Thursday evening at 6 o'clock. That would be the time to get through, into the details of the actual budget document itself. And, and as you read through it during the week, I'd like for you to really notice the changes that have been made to the document that we feel from a staff perspective, we've made it yet a better document than it was last year and will continue to evolve that process. Tuesday of this week, I made a presentation to Rotary Club, kind of the state of the city, if you will, and where we are and things that have been accomplished over certainly the last couple of years, but most recently with the positive forward steps with the implementation of the short four-door plan, the general plan and so on. Attended the Healthy Collaborative Meeting last evening at the, at the hospital. Attended the breakfast meeting this morning, kind of gave the same state of the city address this morning to that group. I would like to remind you that tomorrow, Saturday evening, excuse me, is the K9 fundraiser. Doors open at 5:00. The event starts at 5:30. And that concludes my report. Oh, I did want to say in terms of the budget, it is posted on the website. There's a copy, a public copy available at the counter for anybody who's interested in reviewing it. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Overton?
Okay, I, of course, went to our goals and objectives meeting. I also was at the Healthy Collaborative with St. Molina Hospital here meeting. Most of my colleagues here went through a training as a tourism ambassador training yesterday, and that was very educational. I think we all liked it to learn a little more about our county than what we realize. We have so much here. We say we don't have, but we have tons of stuff there. And I also went to a codeine youth center meeting.
Councilmember Sabatier?
Very quickly, did the budget workshop on June 4th. Yesterday, went to the certified tourism ambassador. We are now official CTAs. That's exciting. And that's it for me.
Councilmember Pernock?
Very short. I'll try to be quick as well. Worked with the cleanup Clearlake, June 6th. Thank you, thank you, thank you to everybody who turned out. It was an amazing crowd. Everybody worked their tails off. Special thanks to Supervisor Jeff Smith, who went out in the airboat. We were collecting quite a bit of garbage along the Cache Creek all the way down to the dam, just about. Collected quite a bit of garbage from there. Teams were sent out into the avenues as well as into the park area. I, I don't know the quantity of garbage that was collected, but I know that it was, it was very impressive. One of the things I want to point out is we collected quite a few shopping carts. Shopping carts thrown in Cache Creek and other waterways and dringes. Please keep an eye on that. But I also want to thank publicly those stores, Safeway, grocery outlet, booth, et cetera, that are making changes before we've even gotten ordinance in place to keep their property on site, keep their shopping carts contained within their property. Thank you, thank you very much for doing that. I still believe we need to move forward with the ordinance, but it's nice to see some positive things happening. I want to thank our public works director. He kind of knocks some things down as far as the weeds go out in front, keeping our front yard looking good, and I hope that everybody else will do the same, keep the fire danger down and make our city look great for the summer. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Fortino Dixon?
I'm so sad I missed my first Clearlake cleanup day in six years.
Where were you?
I was being a tourist somewhere else and I got lots of cool ideas to bring back because Maui is not much unlike us. They have some good streets. They have some bad streets. We did some interesting exploring. And then immediately I went to the CTA workshop and was able to make some connections there. So I'm really excited about Clearlake's opportunities and the direction that we're heading. And I would just like to thank our city manager for being our, being our lighthouse for the last four years and, and always bringing us back to, is this, is this following through with our goals and objectives? Is it, are the steps that we're taking really getting us to the point we want to be? And I think, yes, they have been, and I am really excited about what we have in our future.
Okay. I also participated in the cleanup Clearlake. And I was busy with Facebook on that as well, taking pictures of shopping carts and tagging managers of the stores and saying, "Hi, we're glad to help." So, I'm not sure if he was happy about that, but got the job done. So with that, I attended the Rotary where our city manager spoke and she did a wonderful job recapping almost the whole, my whole term. And it's been amazing. I was very, very excited to listen to what's happened because sometimes you can get drawn down in the everyday things and the, all the monotony and the negativity that sometimes comes along with all of this. And she recapped it all to, just like point of order, man, we are here, we're going somewhere. And such a run, folks, and that's what we plan to do. Thank you. So moving on, I also attended Seroptimus today. And, oh, I did attend the CTA class. Check your email, folks, because there's an email there awaiting you. And it does say that past you become a tourism ambassador and that you will receive your pin from the county. Jeff, are you going to pin that? Yay! So, you better be careful what I'm wishing for. I'm not going to... Okay, very good. So with that, I will close today's meeting if you want. Sure.
For anyone wanting to know what happened at the budget workshop, it's on the board there to the west side of the building or the room here. If you're interested in seeing some of the things that were discussed in the priorities of the city, I apologize for not going to become an ambassador, but I had to go to an ABC Lake Transit meeting.
Oh, you're going to.
So I was busy with that with Mr. Smith and Supervisor District One. Thank you.
Very good. Meeting's over.